Oh.
That's right.
No, I don't want to know.
Good evening and welcome to the February 7th, 2022. Do it again. Okay. Good evening and welcome to the February 7th, 2022 regularly scheduled school committee meeting. Time is now 6:00 PM and we'll call this meeting to order. As a reminder, if anyone is audio or videotaping, please let us know by raising your hand if you're in the virtual audience. Okay, does it look like anybody is? So this time we'll rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, we'll have our roll call. Kathy, do you mind starting us off?
The Lord is our shepherd.
Gregory Thompson.
It's now ready.
Gordon Smith, Superintendent Schools.
Sarah Trullio.
Phil Fonseca.
Elizabeth Marcin-Boucher.
Nick Cassidy.
Excellent. Thank you. So we have some minutes for approval.
Who's to approve the January 18th, 2022 regular session meeting minutes?
Motion made by Bill.
A second.
Second by Beth. Can we move further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose nay. And that motion carries five to zero. One more set. The January 18th, 2022 executive session meeting. Motion made by Ann Sennella. Second by Grace. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. And that motion carries five to zero. Thank you very much. And thank you Kathy for caption notes. And we have an opportunity for visitors to address the committee now. There isn't anybody in attendance here, but if you're watching, I see Mr. McCarthy has his hand up. Good evening.
Good evening, are you?
Sure that you.
Oh, sorry. I'm muted.
Your volume?
My volume maybe? Hold on. Sorry, Justin. Is that better?
Yeah, I tried.
Okay. All right. Good evening. Sorry about that.
No problem.
Uh, yeah, and you're all set. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Last month, you guys had the curriculum director show up and she told you that at the recommendation of elementary specialists, that the the Safe Schools Program was going to be added to the curriculum. I would imagine that's elementary curriculum since the elementary specialists are the ones who recommended it. So there's no discussion about what this program entails. So I went to Desi's website and it says, quote, "That the program provides training and technical assistance relating to LGBTQ students and staff to facilitate an understanding of sexual orientation and gender identity." It goes on to say that the Safe Schools Program is proud to offer newly created curriculum materials to help provide LGBTQ inclusive lessons. These resources range from hour-long discussions to multi-day lessons. And it's available, quote, "in public schools across the state, including public preschools." So I have a daughter in elementary school. I have another young daughter who's going to be entering elementary school. And I just don't think that this needs to be part of their curriculum. Back in November, you guys discussed a social emotional learning survey from teachers kindergarten to two. And the survey showed a significant across-the-board decline in the the social and emotional development of our kids. And the past two years with the lockdowns and the closures and the masks, I believe irreparable mental harm has been done to to our kids and develop mental harm. So I don't think we need to pile on top of it with with this sort of stuff. So I'm asking simply that there's some discussion about this program. First of all, why do we need it? Can we get these elementary specialists to tell us why we need training on sexual orientation and gender identity in elementary schools? And what what is the extent of this? Are we talking about a book or two in the library? Or are we talking about hour-long lessons or multi-day lessons? There's a lot of people here in town that you guys represent who who would like to know more details about this and about the extent of this program. So thank you very much for your time and thank you for your your service on the committee.
Thank you. All right. So I think it's always good to be able to hear from individuals in the community. Um, Heather Brown is not with us this evening, but that is certainly something that we can work to provide some additional information on relative to Desi's initiative around the Safe Schools Program. And we can add that to an upcoming agenda in order to provide some clarification for the community at large, but thank you for sharing that sentiment. Um, Mr. McCarthy, is there anyone else in the audience who is looking to address the committee this evening? Okay. With that, we'll move forward with committee and subcommittee reports. Greg, you want to start us, right?
I'd love to.
Thank you. Well, I just left the ladies freshman basketball game and it was very, very close when it was tied 18-18. Um, literally with like a minute left and they they didn't prevail against Menachos. They lost 21 to 18, but it was a great game and spectators were doing a wonderful job of students and families alike of respecting the masks, the masking, and we're just really great participation on the sidelines as well as the ladies gave a great performance. So best of luck to them as they finish their season. Bill?
Yep. LPBC Career Tech Students of the Month, Culinary Culinary Arts Asia Schaefer, Early Education and Care One Savannah Bissonette, Information Support Services and Networking One Peyton Frye, and Information Support and Services Networking Two Matthew Pelletier. Congratulations to all those students on their hard work.
So thank you both for sharing. And I'm good. Thank you. Nick?
Yes, I have a couple things to share. Um, since I hadn't, I wasn't here last time, um, at ELHS on the 24th, we entered a new semester and started our new classes. So over the past few weeks, we've kind of just been on kind of getting into these new classes, understanding like what they offer and our new teachers. Last week, the freshmen took the Biology MCAS. I have a couple freshman friends and they're all talking about like, oh, we just had MCAS blah blah. But I mean, this is something to talk about. And one exciting thing that's actually happening at ELHS is Spartanum. And during Spartanum, I mean, um, I've like had time to like watch them and like hear them. And the show dates are March 12th and 11th at 7:00 PM for those interested, and it is in person as of right now. Um, so that will be really exciting. I know a lot of kids are happy to have be in person because I was in it my sophomore year and then it got canceled. So I'm really happy to see it be in person. And most winter sports are kind of coming to an end now, but most kids are excited for the spring and all those sports outside.
Very good.
Nick, thanks for sharing. All right. So pass it over to Gordon, who's going to give us a an update on our progress with the test and stay.
Okay. Okay. So as I think most everyone knows, but certainly all of you know, we are participating in the Desi Test and Stay Program. And we've been going through their onboarding the last few weeks. And so what that means is we've been working with a CIC Health Program Coordinator, Christine McWilliams. And she has been helping us order supplies. She has been helping organize right now up to three other employees from CIC who could be on site to help run the actual testing. And she has helped us get up and running with getting the consent set up. And as of at least this afternoon, last week it was 400, but as of this afternoon, we had 415 people consenting. We have the test kits and the supplies to get running. Our hope is that later this week, we will meet with the staff that will be onsite, will be able to give them tours and possibly be up and running by the end of the week. Um, just to give you a little bit of a background, because I know that this has been confusing. So Desi offers four testing options, testing programs, if you will. We currently are participating in the test and stay. And what that means is that if someone has been identified as a close contact due to being within that distance of less than three feet for over 15 minutes accumulated time on a given day to someone who is positive, and all this has happened in a in school or a school-sponsored event, those individuals, as long as they're asymptomatic and consent to be part of the program, can during the morning come in, test with a rapid antigen test, as long as the test is negative, they can go on to their classes. That would happen during the regular quarantine time, so roughly five times, five mornings, as long as they stay asymptomatic. Pool testing, symptomatic testing, and then the one that was just recently, and it'll be on the next slide, introduced home testing. Right now, those are other options that Desi offers, but we're not participating in. In, I'm going to move to the next slide unless there are questions. You know, good so far.
Well, the one thing also worth mentioning is is for the unvaccinated are the only ones who qualify for test and stay, is that correct?
If you're vaccinated.
You can't be a direct contact.
You're not a a close contact. Yes, you're correct. You're not a close contact as long as you're asymptomatic.
Right, but the only people that are eligible for tests is they are the unvaccinated.
Yeah, if they're identified as a close contact.
That's the only way to be eligible for tests and say.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Wasn't meant to be a trick question.
No, I had to think about it because it's like anything else, it's it's there's a lot of different variables.
Well, I specifically had a parent ask me based on the form to sign up for, you know, my students are vaccinated, should I sign up? And my response was no, because they wouldn't qualify as of yet if we opt into some other program.
They would not be identified as a close contact. Unless, and and only would they be in a tough situation as if when they became symptomatic.
Which they wouldn't be eligible for tests and stay anyway.
Right. Once you become symptomatic.
So I think that 400, within that 425, they're probably, some of them are probably vaccinated. They just didn't understand it.
Probably.
I can't imagine we have 425 unvaccinated.
Unvaccinated, well, we're, yeah, we're still.
Close, probably close, but they're.
We're still hovering right around 69% at the high school in terms of students, yeah, vaccinated. We're increasing now in the younger grades due to the fact that the new vaccination is out and.
Is it just because we're not asking the right question or because I feel like we should be there by now? The town is almost 80%, aren't they?
No, town, yeah, town's still in the, I believe either.
I believe, yeah. Yeah, but I thought the schools would be considerably better and the high schools specifically, but.
Do they consider kids fully vaccinated if they have not had the booster?
Right now, if they've had both shots Pfizer or Moderna, yeah, or the Johnson and Johnson.
I don't want to cast aspersions on this, but in my mind, the vaccines have been out there for over a year now. If you're going to get vaccinated, I assume you would have done it by now.
Oh, gives me a chance to plug our vaccine.
We have two clinics, we want mask optional. We have 58%.
Oh, I know.
I don't think Desi's going to take it off for the next month or two.
I don't think they are.
So we have to because the town will, I bet. At the end of this month, the town will take it off. So.
Well, the numbers are trending in the right way, in the right area. Yeah.
If we get to 80% at the high school, we can go mask optional for the rest of the school year, potentially prom.
But I'm just, no, no, I agree.
Yeah, so, I mean, we got to figure out a way to get more information because I feel we're closer than 60, 60%. I don't know how, or maybe just the clinics will help. Maybe push the clinics and say, listen, if your peers can get in and get vaccinated, those that haven't that are on the fence, that might tip the scales to to go mask optional at the high school.
Yeah, it could. Yeah. So we've shared, we've shared information on the clinic over the last few weeks with all families. Yeah.
It'll be interesting to see what the attendance was at the clinic when, you know, when it all flushes out.
Is that next week?
It's today.
Today.
Oh, it's today.
Yeah, and then there's another, another one on 28.
Okay.
So, um, along those lines, I'll let Mr. Mackey get back onto the screen. It it is confusing while we're waiting to get to the screen. Because you bring up the consent form, and I know it's confusing, especially online. You bring up the consent form and the first thing that it goes to is pooled testing. And so I wanted to make sure that it's very clear that right now, all we're participating in is the test and stay program. Unfortunately, East Long Meadow and no other school district can change the consent form. That's part of the testing program. If we're opting in, that's the consent form. So I just want to make sure families know, all they are consenting to right now is test and stay and to the point that Mr. Thompson's making, really, it's a limited population that would be if they are within that three feet and possibly could be identified. If they're vaccinated, then they're not going to be a close contact. So you're right. So it becomes a smaller, a smaller population. However, in our elementary schools and our middle school, it's larger than in the high school. High school has always had the the smallest amount of identified close contacts due to that fact.
Right. Well, it's an option to opt out of quarantine. It's the only way opting out of quarantine. If you're vaccinated, you're not a close contact, but this would be the other option for families to choose this.
Correct.
For in-person or for.
As as long as, yeah, as long as they're identified.
Which is silly, in my opinion.
Through our programs, yeah. So that's, that's, I guess, a good segue because it's this point of confusion. So on January 18th, as we were still doing our onboarding to test and stay, Desi, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, introduced a new part of their program, testing program. And this is home testing. So this is where they are providing districts who opt in rapid antigen tests. Weekly, I believe. No, every other week, every other week, so that the districts then can distribute them to families who opt into this program. And it's a whole nother opt-in process. The key for the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, for a district to move into this is that they have to be doing one of the two other programs, pooled testing or symptomatic testing in order to move into home testing. But it definitely has been the push since January 18th, that that's where Desi would like to go. And it's for a couple of reasons, I think. It's the biggest reason is probably because they would like to see or take the burden off school nurses around the whole close contact tracing.
So does test and stay and symptomatic testing then go away if we get into home?
Symptomatic testing still could happen because you could have people who present symptoms during the day and they come down to the health room. And they, if they've consented, they can get a rapid antigen test to see whether they have COVID, don't have COVID, can continue on their, with their work or with their school day.
Testing state would go away.
Testing state would go away.
See, that was the part of originally why we didn't want to get it to symptomatic because we didn't want to overwhelm our internal system. But by taking that portion away and doing the home testing, that frees up that whole test and stay program goes away.
You still would have the CIC helping you.
For the symptomatic.
For symptomatic possibly and for organizing this program.
The at-home test?
Yeah, most likely be your CIC Program Coordinator. It probably you would not keep too many of the sort of onsite personnel.
So should we, should we get into the symptomatic testing program?
That's up to you. I mean, we have yet to really broach test and stay.
The whole testing program?
Yeah.
I mean, how how quickly does it happen?
So this, this has taken us, what, three, four weeks to get on board and really be ready to up, actually do the program. Districts around us who were doing test and stay and doing symptomatic testing, who are opting in, have just begun this program.
The home.
The home one.
Yep.
And they were trying to figure out their struggle is, how do I distribute this? Does it go home? The, you know, the rapid antigen test go home with the child at the elementary level in the backpack? What what is the? How do I communicate this? How do I deal with the opt-in? Because there is a, basically, it's a Google form that Desi has created and said, okay, use this, but you still have to create a system similar to say the consent, the electronic consent, possibly to have it somewhat easier for families to opt in.
Would everyone be eligible for the at-home?
As far as I understand it, everybody who's interested in.
Unvaccinated.
They all can, they all can.
Out of school.
They all can.
Symptomatic, asymptomatic.
Yeah, I don't think that matters.
Okay, so why don't we do that?
But with the family, and that, this is a, just clarification, would a family have to opt into symptomatic in order to also be able to opt in to at-home?
No, they'd have to opt into the opt at home.
Yeah, I think they opt in. So when they sign the.
I think we go for the whole thing all at once. We add symptomatic and then we, at the same time, we'll get rid of test and stay and start the at-home. It can all happen at once. So we're going to have to opt into the symptomatic and home one, right, Gordon?
Yeah, yes. So the the district, the district basically is the the group electing with a vote by all of you to move into symptomatic testing, which would then allow the district, once you have voted, I can then do a, what they call a survey for Desi to say, we also, and you can add that to your motion if you like, to complete the survey to move into the home testing program.
But that would.
Families, to the question I think you're asking, we could still have our nursing staff, if it's a child who is coming down with symptoms to the the nurse's office, call and say, I have your child here. You have consented, you know, that they can check that, or you have not consented. Would you like me to do a rapid antigen test?
So we can opt in day of.
You can opt in.
No, I get that, but I also just think like for families, like we're talking about something that was already a little bit confusing.
I know. We're going to confuse them again.
A lot of them.
So then for them to now opt into something else.
Is what it is.
And we're basically invalidating what they've already consented to.
You're you're not invalidating it because.
We wouldn't participate.
We're still going to use it for a month. It's going to take a month.
Yeah, it's going to take time to get up and.
That's why we should do it now. We wait a month and then we're another month out.
So so we're really not closing out the test and stay program until we have the ability to run.
Oh, yeah, no, right. But I think once we start to at home, it would cease the.
You would, you would start to, yeah, move off of it. Yes. If that makes sense.
No, it does. It does. I just, I want to make sure like we are.
No, I think it's important.
For families, because it's very confusing.
Well, and even if we opt in the systematic, your question as well, we can, we have to ask permission for that too.
Right, that's.
But you can do that day of, which is really what's, that's the only one that's symptomatic really makes sense for is day of because.
Right.
Oh, you have symptoms, let's get consent from your family or we'll send you.
Yeah.
Right. If if we were identifying to take it off the symptomatic, let's say we had a positive, it was, we're doing the close contact tracing pretty rapidly. And all of a sudden Gordon Smith has been identified as close contact. If I them and brought down to the nurse's office and they call my parents, at that point, if I am asymptomatic and my parents have not consented for me to participate test and stay, they could at that time.
Yeah.
Authorize for me to to test and stay and then as long as they test positive, or excuse me, negative, I go on my way.
But I think families should just also be aware that they didn't consent to this like right now because it's very confusing.
I wouldn't ask for it now.
No, but the permission slip lists it. So what they said, yes, to list all of them. I just want families thinking we're doing something.
But I want to ask, we, I say we don't even go for consent on the symptomatic until we go for consent yet. We have, do they have to opt in to the at-home?
Yes.
Yes.
So.
Is that the consent form?
Yes. So so let me explain.
Good.
Okay. So the consent form that is basically the CIC's developed form for the Desi program has all three, pooled testing, symptomatic and test and stay on it. You cannot change it. So parents have asked, and and I've tried to explain it as I am now in individual conversations, and now hopefully to everyone who's watching, that right now their consent online is simply for the test and stay program because that's all this body has voted to participate in. Should we possibly tonight change that? You're voting that the district, and I would put that right in the motion, that the district participate in symptomatic testing. But that does not mean, or excuse me, let me revise that, the district participate in symptomatic testing and have then our nurses for students still contact families to see if they would be interested in symptomatic testing, you know, should that occasion arise for their child.
Right. On an individual.
No, I mean, the consent, the 415 people in essence have consented, but we will still ask for it individually each time it arises.
Yeah.
Because I think that's.
But then we ask for consent for the opt, the opt-in.
So the, so so that's the second part.
Okay.
The opt-in is something that is separate and we would have to, the district, East Long Meadow, would have to figure out a way to take the Desi word form and make it somewhat operational so that we can hopefully have an electronic consent or opt into this program. And then if they opt in, basically what they're saying is we would like to be part of the distribution process and receive every two weeks a rapid antigen home test.
Per child?
Two per student.
Yeah, well, it's two per kid. I suppose I could do it, yeah, if they have multiple children. Yeah.
Well, because it's supposed to be one, that's why it's every week. So you have the option to test once per week with the two in the kit.
For a student.
For students.
So each student receives two, a package of two every week.
Right.
If they opted.
If they opted, yep. And then the obligation of participating is, should you test positive, that you are reporting that to your child's nurse's office at the school.
Fair enough.
And then obviously you would go through the the five-day isolation.
Everything sticks in.
Yeah.
But I guess my question is, what happens to those individuals still who are deemed a close contact at school? They, if they're not vaccinated and we don't.
Home test.
They get one. They would have to test for five.
Yeah, so that's why I would say you won't, don't want to necessarily totally dismiss test and stay. You can still have that as an option.
Yeah, I mean, I think we see how many students we have in the test and stay because if it's only.
We have 415.
We have 415. There are half of them were vaccinated.
You don't know that.
We don't know that.
But I, yeah, no, no. So it's on time. We have to see how, we have to see the number.
I just.
Whether it's worth keeping continuously.
Correct.
The numbers will.
I mean, we don't know really how many individuals, you know, over the next few weeks are going to even be able to participate. Do they, have they consented? Are they a close contact? Or actually reverse that? Have you identified as a close contact? Have you consented? The reality is, last week, we had one where we up and running. So that's going to be an interesting path that we will go through. One thing that I've been really negligent on is that I think Kellie LaMombard, our nurse leader, who was at the vaccine clinic, probably is in the audience.
Oh, she is now, yeah.
And if we can bring her in,
she is.
I'm sure she would love to participate in this debate and or discussion.
I mean, I don't have a concern about bringing on additional means of keeping kids and families in school. My concern is more confusing.
Right.
Or causing confusion.
It's very confusing.
Especially because, hi Kelly.
Hi Kelly. So that was my fault. Sorry, Kelly.
That's okay.
Just because they don't, yeah, 415 people who said yes to one thing. And then I just don't want anyone to think that if we move towards this, that they've automatically said yes to symptomatic because it's all in the same permissions.
We're not going to ask them until they're identified as, well, they would be identified as symptomatic, they go to the nurse and the nurse would have to call. I would say we don't go out with another.
Uh, we can't. It's not the way.
Because I do ones and then twice.
That way.
But I would wait, once we get the at-home, then we do the opt-in form. That would be the next one that goes out.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. We have to have the symptomatic in order to get you. That's the only reason why we're doing it.
Kelly, just to bring you up to speed, and you may have been following along and hopefully it's making sense. We were explaining the test and stay program. We were explaining the fact that we have about 415 or more people who have consented. We've also spoken about. We've also spoken about the fact that uh the online consent form is confusing. Because it has the other programs, pool testing and symptomatic testing explained on it. And and we have no way to revise that. Um but we were reaffirming for our families. That right now, all that these Long Island Public Schools are participating in is the test and stay program. And um if we were to vote to move towards symptomatic testing. That we would certainly be calling, should a a child come down with symptoms, we would call that parent. And before moving ahead with any kind of um rapid antigen test in that scenario.
Correct.
So the symptomatic testing then would allow, if the if the board um or the committee just chooses to vote that way. Would allow us to take the survey, which puts us in the mix for onboarding for the home testing program. That that's, that's where we are.
Does that seem like a logical uh task, Kelly, to you?
Yes, I was getting not nervous, but here we were having three new staff start with the C I C S. And we only had one close contact last week, which is a good thing. So from what I read, Desi wants to focus in on symptomatic staff and students. And and get away from the close contact tracing, because ninety-six percent of the kids. That were identified across Massachusetts as being a close contact were negative.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Remember when it was sixteen?
Yeah.
Remember? Morning, masks for sixteen?
Yeah, I remember.
So then I think all of this makes good sense. I just, I still have concerns for people who are close contacts outside of school. Like we're still basically saying vaccines are the only way back in, or you've gotta sit out of school six days, five, come back.
No, I mean, they, they, yeah, well, I mean, we. The only way we know about um close contacts outside of school, uh we're still getting them through our health department, correct Kelly?
Yes.
Yeah. So we don't have a remedy for that.
That's a good point, that's a good point.
Yeah.
We don't have a, we don't have a remedy for that yet.
Yeah.
Cause it's a single test, so and we wouldn't.
Once a week.
Currently, we don't accept.
What's the point of that? Why, why is this once a week though? Cause this does, this isn't the.
Oh, it does. It 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 basically gives you.
One day.
It, yes, and basically it just gives you a baseline every week of where your.
So it's kind of like shifting.
Yeah, but I thought if you were either symptomatic or direct contact, you could use at-home testing instead of test and stay.
No.
No?
No.
No.
Forget it then, nevermind.
I mean, it gives access to our families to free at-home tests.
It's, this is about freeing up. That's the way. Yeah, but that's the way, that's the way it's set up.
That's, there's, there's gotta be some.
That's why it's, that's why it's confusing.
In terms of like a policy.
Well, it's silly. I mean, if we're gonna supplant test and stay, we should supplant it and give five tests to them. To the kid, so they go through their five-day period.
Yes.
And come to school every day after they test, cause we're giving the same test we would give them here.
But that's not the way they set it up, yeah.
No.
That's not, that's not the Desi.
Not the Desi protocol.
I, I don't have that many tests to offer people.
Right. So but do we have to, going back to where you're saying, everybody would get one box that has two tested every other week?
Yeah.
We have to do that, or can we just hold on to them?
But then do we, this is where I don't know.
Yeah.
If we have the capacity, if we as a board have the ability to go. To say, okay, we're gonna accept at-home tests.
Yes, that's the whole point of it.
That's not what the point of this is though, that's, this is, this is, this is taking.
Whole testing is not instead of test and stay.
No, this is taking pool testing and basically saying, now you do it yourself.
Yeah.
Well, that's silly.
So that's what it is.
If we're gonna say.
So the difference is.
Five days later, oh, there was COVID in that classroom five days ago.
The difference is that pool testing, you don't know, because it's a pool.
Yeah.
Who the positive was. In home testing program, you're talking about one individual, that individual's identified, obviously. And we know whether that individual is positive or negative.
But we also do know that timing is everything when it comes to taking the COVID test. PCR or a rapid at-home or an antigen, whatever it is. So you could take that one test on a Tuesday. And by Wednesday, you could be asymptomatic.
Is that the strategy that they're encouraging is take everyone that opts in should take it once a week regardless of anything else?
That's the theory behind, yes.
What it's for? Or is it for, you're allowed one week, if you don't need it, keep it for next week?
Test once a week.
No, the the theory is a test once a week. At this point, I think we should stay with the test.
I don't know, Gordon, what do you wanna do?
I, I think.
Can we say we're interested in doing it, start the process and then say, no, we don't? So at least the process is being processed.
You either go or not, you can't change.
Well, yeah, I mean, can you start it and opt out? Yes, but each one takes a number of weeks to get going. So I mean, we're not even up fully and running in test and stay.
Let's just do test and stay.
It ju- it just offers, it offers another option for your families.
That's it.
It offers another option for your families. It's not the panacea.
Yeah.
It's not gonna solve everything.
No.
But it offers another option. And the unfortunate thing was, we got. Into test and stay right when they decided we're gonna launch home testing, so it became really confusing. Okay, what is? What is the value of this or value of that? I'm sorry?
They're not gonna stop test and stay?
No, they're just, they're just putting, they're just putting pressure to move towards home testing.
They're trying to take the pressure off the nurses in school.
If it doesn't change anything.
Yeah.
I didn't say it did, but that's what the theory is.
Silly this, this is just silly.
I think.
You can stop if if they're participating, you can stop close contact tracing. That's what it changes.
That's what, that's.
You don't have to go in and then do the close contact. Right.
Same thing.
Cause we don't have to close contact those that are vaccinated. So that's what I'm saying.
The vaccine, vaccination has nothing to do.
No, it doesn't.
And in this.
Yes, it does, because you just said it doesn't, it only would take away the close contact testing in the school.
No, no, what it, what it does is, if uh you're participating in this program. Basically, you're saying to the nurses, they no longer have to close contact trace.
Yeah.
You can move away from that. Desi's giving them the the liberty to move away from that.
Okay, but then no one would qualify for test and stay.
Correct.
Correct.
So why would you keep test and stay?
Well, it's, it's, it's a moot point. If you're not keeping it, you're not getting rid of it, it's just there.
It's just there, like you're not really.
I wanna know if Kathy.
What do you guys, what do you wanna do, what do you think?
I, I think it's, it's just another option. So if you're interested in participating, eh and Kelly, I would certainly defer and and love to hear your thoughts on it. It, outside of families, I always thought symptomatic testing gave an option for staff who consented. If they were not feeling well, for whatever reason, they could go and get a test and then they can feel more confident. That they either do not have COVID or they do have COVID and move into the protocols needed. That, that was one of the reasons why. Back in December, I had um recommended symptomatic. Uh but Kelly, please.
So I had a staff meeting with all the nurses and they would like to do symptomatic testing. And home testing. And they, you know, they were like, why are we doing test and stay? And I said, because that's what we voted on. And we have to follow through unless, you know, you guys change your mind. So um.
Or in this case, just add another.
I just think it makes more sense, because remember when we had so many close contacts, it would have been perfect for us to have that. But now, last week, we had one, one close contact. And really, that's what we've been talking about, that we shouldn't have close contacts if we're following our protocols.
Oh, well, we're good.
Yeah, because we did.
Yeah.
We were.
But less. It, but so Kelly, are you saying we should not be doing the test and stay at all?
I just don't think there's gonna be a lot of kids. I mean, you know, the the positives are down. Like I said, only one close contact. I don't, I don't know. It doesn't make sense, I don't think, to put all that energy into test and stay when we don't have the students to test.
Do you need to stay in test and stay to get the at-home?
No, you just have to.
No, you have.
Yeah, I mean, I, I wouldn't recommend a motion that. Gets rid of test and stay. I would just, if if you're, if you're thinking of going the direction of home testing. Then you just basically add symptomatic testing.
Yeah, so the staff can handle symptomatic, Kelly?
That they have to consent, just like family. I'm sorry.
I did speak to the program coordinator for C I C. And I told her that there was a school committee meeting tonight and that we were gonna discuss. And she said that their staff could help us. There's some of the nurses that would like to do their own. You know, do it in the health room, but there's some health rooms that are busier than others.
Right.
So we still use the staff from C I C and they did provide all of the um P P E that we need.
I think if we're gonna go this route, oh, sorry Kelly, I think if we're gonna go, then we need to really think about what we're accepting then.
Right.
In terms of, of kids who are, if a family is self-reporting, my child was a close contact. And now we are not currently letting them come to school, if they're not vaccinated and they were close contact out of school. But we're gonna accept.
An antigen test.
Rapid at homes, and I think we have to try to strike some balance, because we're kinda contradicting ourselves.
Well, why else would we offer an at-home program if we weren't gonna accept that as a result of?
But you're.
Because you're serving two different purposes.
Right. All the, all the home testing program is serving is whether you are positive or not. The, the close contact, because they won't have five tests in a row at their. From most, in most cases, they're not gonna have at their disposal, five tests in a row.
What if they bomb, would we accept them?
We don't right now.
So, so that's not technically part of the program. You know, down the road, as we get going, I can certainly research whether. An individual school committee can decide to accept that.
I just think that needs to be like our next action step. Like if we're gonna go forward with symptomatic and at-home, then I think in order to be. I don't know, transparent, fair, whatever you wanna call it, like then we should also be considering ways that we would. Go about collecting information from families if they're self-reporting that their child was a close contact.
Yeah.
And they are willing to test for five consecutive days and report that, then they should be able to come to school if we're opting to say at-home test count for something.
Kelly, what do you think about that, Kelly?
So I think the home tests are good at. Uh determining if somebody's positive. So if there's a home test and it's positive, we're going with their positive. But then if you have a kid that's negative, but presents with all of the symptoms of COVID. The fever, the ru- you know, shortness of breath, all of that. Even if they're negative, we're gonna send them for a PCR, because why do they have all those symptoms? The symptomatic testing is more for. Um you know, somebody has congestion, somebody has a headache, or somebody has um. A runny nose with no other symptoms. And if we test them in school and they're negative, they can stay. But the ones that have the full-blown, all the symptoms and they test negative, we're still gonna send those kids home, because. They could be positive and they should have a PCR, which is the gold standard.
But, but Kelly, if we're accepting now, test and stay, close contact, go to test and stay, negative PCR test. Uh or antigen test, you can stay. Can we make the same logical assumption that. Close contact, no symptoms, uh at-home antigen test, come on in.
How do we know they're doing the tests though? They, you, so you're, and who would they get the tests from? Because we're only getting.
Oh, we give them one.
Per student or per staff.
But I think if you're, if you have a family, for instance, who is offering that information to you, like we have to think about this. If it's a close contact out of school, dance, sports, anything. If you have that happening and a family is offering you that information and substantively saying, my kid is now out of school for five days. I'm willing to test them every single day and send you the results. I, I mean.
Yeah.
Apparently just say.
Family that does, there's multiple.
I think, I think we need to research it.
Yeah, I think so too.
That's the only thing that gives value to it to me, because testing everyone once a week is not worth it. I'm not into, you know, what are we gonna get?
I think that's a program.
Yeah, no, I didn't realize that.
Yeah, so the, the. That I, I haven't, I don't have, know of any other district that's doing that.
I'm not saying there is, I just think.
That's accepting, you know, five in a row at home.
That's what we do here, we should.
But it's the, it's test at home.
But we don't, nor does any other district.
We're trying to get away from close contacts in schools, right? We're trying to get away.
No, Desi's trying to take the load off the nurses.
So if we no longer have close contact identification in school, then why does at-home matter? And if it matters at home, why not take the results of the same test we're giving a test.
The reality is.
Just trust the parents that they have a name. Just sound like we have to trust that they got the vaccination.
So, so there's, excuse me, there's a reality, is that you're probably gonna have fewer parents call in and say. Uh my child's a close contact. You might still, we still would get the health department. Letting us know who the close contacts are, but you, you know, if we go to home testing, all they have to really report is whether they're positive or.
Right. Right.
That's all they have to volunteer.
What you're saying, yes, he's trying to get to.
Correct. And so if they, if they report that they're positive, they have to isolate anyway.
Right. Any positive test is gonna keep them out of school.
Correct.
Antigen PCR. When we accept the antigens in school, we should accept them at home. Are they available now at like CBS, do we know, tests?
Yeah.
I mean, they're, they're becoming more available.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's so many variables involved, because what if you have a family of six? And you have one positive and everyone else is being exposed to that positive, at least in school. That positive is not in school anymore, so nobody's being exposed to that student. So there's no way we can weigh in on home, because we don't know all the variables. Who's positive, who's vaccinated? So I don't think we could do that. I don't think we could accept, if they had five days of negative, they could come to school.
We accept it right now, though, to return on day six.
Yes.
A negative on day five.
Yeah.
No, not PCR at home.
Yeah, we can do an at-home.
We're accepting at-home tests for some things, but we're not accepting them for others. And if we move towards. More at-home options, we're still not necessarily supporting the group that is gonna be out of school. That, that's where I'm just confused. If we're trying to be more inclusive to keep the kids in the classroom, any of these shifts we make. Still doesn't provide any kind of entry point to people who are not choosing to vaccinate their child, is how I see it. And maybe I'm looking at this from the wrong lens.
If you need a negative antigen test to be in school.
PCR.
No, but right now. Then why doesn't an antigen test count to stay in school? Yeah.
That's.
It's not part of the Desi program, that's basically what.
We can't invent our own rules.
Oh, we can definitely invent our own.
But I think if we're gonna move forward with changing and making an a motion tonight to move into at-home and symptomatic. Then we should do our due diligence and do some research to see if we can. Opt into accepting or create our own motion to let families submit at-home tests in those five days. Because if not, then we're not really letting anybody back into school that isn't already going to school.
Right.
We're basically saying, those who can, can.
I mean, I think basically it's gonna become a legal opinion.
It is, because I've done some, I've tried to do some reading on this and nowhere do I see. Where anything would be accepted from, like to your point, the five states straight at-home test. I can't find anything that says that's acceptable. It may not be there. It may not be part of.
Yeah, and then we can always go to, in, you know, do our due diligence on whatever it is we need to look up and then add it to it after.
But I think the first question is, to your point, can they test, use their own test at home? On days three, two, three, four and five, right?
Yeah, I think that's like what we need to.
That's what we're talking about.
Because.
Because one test a week.
I think by the time we get to it, with that might already be decided, I bet.
Correct.
So I'll move that we participate in uh uh symptomatic testing district-wide. Including having nurses uh in the staff contact students, families the day of. Also to uh participate in the home testing program as the. Lining up of the scheduling permits.
A second thought. Motion made by Greg. Second thought, Beth, any further discussion? Motion made by Greg, second by Beth, any further discussion?
Is that enough, Gordon? Are you, are we there? Are we making it? Kelly, does that make it better, you think? If we do the.
I think it does.
But we're not opting out in that motion of test and stay.
Well, we'll keep moving forward with tests and stay as as far as I understand the motion. But what it does is it allows me now to submit the survey to start the onboarding process for. The home testing program. It also allows our nurses to, should there be someone who comes into the health office with symptoms. To ask if they consent, if it's an adult, or call home to get consent. To do a rapid antigen test at that moment and determine whether that person can go on with their day at school or should be going home.
So just wanna let you know that we can't take a verbal consent, but if the parent goes on and signs on electronically. You know.
Or if it's an elementary, if it's an elementary parent, they're gonna be coming to the school anyway and they can sign off. Right then, we have copies in the office, they can sign off right there.
Yep, we have paper ones, electronic.
So as somebody who then consented to test and stay. I sign up electronically, then I have to come pick up my kid who's gonna be tested for symptomatic now, and I have to sign another permission slip. Even though I already signed one already.
Yes, you do. But Kelly, we can do it online, you said, right?
Told that if you put it online, it takes three days to show up. We have paper ones, so they can fill them out, and all the nurses have copies of paper consent for staff and students in their health rooms.
It's not as helpful because now my kid, I still have to come to the school to get my kid, even though I consented to something online. So I feel like in some ways, those four hundred and fifteen.
We need consent.
Yeah, but.
Especially if we've told them that what they're consenting for right now. So now, now. As I, as I did say in my communication home, that should they, should we change, I would update that for everyone so that they understand. I don't think they can go back in and consent electronically. I don't believe so, but we'll check that out.
How was the clinic tonight?
Uh fifty-one participants. They had forty-five registered and we had some people that walked in. We also gave out KN ninety-fives or the the board of health did, I helped them. Um and a test kit for each household.
Were there students there, Kelly?
Yes, there were.
Okay, great.
Some were getting boosters, some were getting their first shot.
Twenty-eight, correct?
Yes, three to six. In the Berchtl Park Library.
Alright, so an emotion made by Greg, it was seconded by Beth. Any further discussion? Do you think we should have like a? A health information night after this hurts so that families? Or like have a centralized location so we can let them have permission slips if that's the only way they can opt in or I just.
I think this is gonna be a limited number of people that are gonna be tweeting now. And the app at-home opt-in, once we get to the at-home opt-in. It's a retirement month.
At least.
We had four hundred and fifteen people in two weeks.
But not direct contacts or symptomatic.
So I think I think you're gonna see this number go up because people are gonna want access to the home tests. So I don't think she's.
This is, this is the avenue for the home test.
No, but I think again.
We're gonna give them that chance. When we're ready for home tests, we're gonna back out to all the families.
All those in favor say aye, aye, pose nay, and that motion carries five to zero.
We'll try to unravel the confusion as we go. I it is confusing and I appreciate everyone's patience as well as our family's patience.
It's just impressive how we're going on. I'm thinking you're talking about um. But Nick, you you know, being in Spartanum your sophomore year and that moment in time when you guys finished that Spartanum and you went home. And it's been since then. Okay, and we're still just the whole, it just boggles my mind that it's still being figured out.
Because that's the guidance we're getting.
Alright, thank you, Kelly.
Kelly, thank you so much.
Alright, Gordon, are you taking us through the gift donations?
I can take you through the gift donations. You probably need a um.
What did we table the F Y twenty-two second quarter financial report?
Motion made by Bill, second by Ann Snella, any further discussion? All of them favor, please say aye. And that motion carries five to zero.
Excuse me, I just mentioned Nick, he might want to go home soon because I guess it's starting to freeze outside a little bit, so.
Good luck on the exams tomorrow, good luck on studying tonight. Um if you could just write a paper on how to communicate.
You'd get it to him by tomorrow afternoon, that'd be appreciated.
In your packet, uh we do have a memo from Dr. Allen at Berchtl Park Middle School. And he would like uh to have approval on a check from Grinn and Barrett Enterprises. For two thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars and thirty-two cents. This will be deposited into Berchtl Park's gift account. For future use.
I moved to accept the check in the amount of two thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars and thirty-two cent. From Grin and Barrett to be put into the gift account at Berchtl Park Middle.
Alright, motion made by Beth. Second by Bill, any further discussion? Alright, all those in favor, please say aye. And that motion carries five to zero.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh next, we have a similar type uh gift and check from Grinn and Barrett. This is at Maple Shade. And the amount is for five hundred dollars and this would go into Maple Shade's gift account.
I moved to accept the five hundred dollars um for Grin and Barrett to Maple Shade School to go into their gift account.
Motion made by Beth. Second by Ann Snella, any further discussion? I think all those in favor, please say aye.
Okay.
Alright.
Moving on to old business.
Yes, we are twenty twenty-three budget development.
So unfortunately, uh Mrs. Blair can't be with us this evening, but I'm gonna. Do my best to, usually we have a um collaborative approach to this uh this presentation. But I will walk us through and I'm sure we'll have a very substantive discussion. Um in your packet, we did look at this discussion this year a little bit differently. Uh probably mostly because this year. The state is incredibly fiscally strong and they have um decided to. Um in their budget, the governor's budget, uh which is the first one to come out. To increase, uh first fully fund the Student Opportunity Act, which helped uh increase chapter seventy for a number of districts. But also take a look just in the foundation budget. At certain specifics, uh such as, as you go down the bullet points on that first sheet. Looking at uh low income. Uh and so in the the governor's preliminary budget, our chapter seventy is. Designated to increase by possibly eight hundred and fifty-four thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars, which is a significant increase. Um I believe it's seven percent, uh seven percent increase. In terms of the chapter seventy we received. So this is the money that comes in through the town, through all municipalities. But it's earmarked since it's the chapter seventy-eight for education or for schools. Um just to give you. A a basic idea of how this is all determined in the foundation budget. Foundation budget looks at enrollment. That's the October one deadline um for all districts as of October one. They look at. Your foundation budget enrollment, what schools have in terms of their enrollment. And that enrollment then dictates a good deal of what type of chapter seventy increase you're going to get the next year. Um they have a wage adjustment factor, they have a factor for inflation. They're also looking at um things such as in terms of the local contribution, the municipality's contribution, property value, income. And municipal revenue growth. Uh this year, our October one, we did have an increase in our enrollment of approximately seventy-eight students. Talking about, I'm just going through, I'm not going through all of the bullets. Uh but you know, there in this budget, there is an inflation factor that's incorporated. Uh four point five one percent. Specifically on the uh employee benefits. Uh which is important because you know, that's one of the areas that increases significantly faster than some of the other areas of the budget. And then four point five percent on other areas. We do know that in December. That December closed with an inflation or at least the Consumer Price Index of around seven percent, but I think overall. Inflation for the year was somewhere around five point one percent. In terms of our town, we know as we've discussed in the past, right now, Eastland Meadow is in strong, a strong fiscal shape. Uh they have free cash certified at five point six million. They have in their stabilization fund, three point four million. Um tax rate is down at twenty dollars and twenty-nine cents per thousand, so it's down seventy-seven cents. From the uh rate last year of twenty-one point oh six. Um one of the fears over my tenure and I'm sure prior to my tenure has always been, um they worry about creeping up to that ceiling of. Twenty-five dollars per thousand. Um and so we're moving the right direction from that twenty-five. Our bond rating is the highest that it's been um at double A plus. Property values continue to increase. Um the best news is that revenues are coming in at least at the estimated level, if not higher. And similar to us with Esser Funding, the town has had ARPA. Um funding, federal funding that um they've had access to and uh that's allowed. Not only uh for reimbursement for things like uh P P E on the town side and other COVID-related spending. It also has allowed for infrastructure projects to get moving um and to become something that. Is acted upon and accomplished as opposed to something that's still in the planning stage.
Let me ask the number of students. I know enrollment's up, so we're back to where we were before.
We're not back to where we were pre-pre pandemic. Uh we're just under twenty-five hundred students district-wide. We still have a decent number of homeschool students, more than we had in a pre-pandemic.
So do we think that's still probably COVID-related?
I think some of it's COVID-related, yeah. I I think uh, yeah.
Is it legal to reach out and ask them why?
I mean, you can always ask why. A lot of times uh they'll indicate why in the letter that they send with the plan. Uh so I can say that, yes, some is COVID-related.
But just because when they say our student numbers are down, you know, wanna know that we're still working on this. COVID thing and the pandemic and parents feeling comfortable and childcare issues and all that, so that's why I asked.
Sure, no, it's a great question. On the next page, just gives you an idea of where our chapter seventy has been over the last um. Seven years or so from F Y sixteen to um the estimated F Y twenty-three. And then off of the chapter seventy, um where the town's contribution has been. Um and then together, that's what meets the full budget. And the town has to obviously contribute a certain amount for us to meet net school spending. So, just taking a look, if you look at um just the last two years. Um last year with the Student Opportunity Act, we just. Were increased the minimal amount, which was thirty dollars per student for their enrollment. And so that increased our chapter seventy by seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars. Um which is only a point six percent increase, relatively small comparatively when you look. If you jump over F Y twenty-one and you go back F Y sixteen through F Y twenty. Uh certainly, uh the one of the lowest increases with the exception of F Y sixteen. If you go all the way across, just so you're reading this chart, the town uh put in two percent. Uh last year in terms of their increase for the net school spending. Um we had point six percent increase, chapter seventy, they put in two percent overall. That's what um ultimately went into. Um our final budget figures. The point of looking at this chart was just to get an idea, one of where chapter seventy has been over the last seven years. But also just to get an idea also where the town's contribution has been. And so they've averaged roughly over the last seven years. Around one point eight percent. Um and as we go through and we continue to talk about uh what we would like to hopefully achieve in this budget process. That's gonna come back and and be a significant uh number in terms of just the average as. This might be the year and you've heard uh the town manager say it, that um we're in a very strong fiscal position. Departments maybe have uh now the opportunity to grow. Uh two years ago, when we were all trying to figure out where the pandemic might take us from a fiscal standpoint, there was a lot of anxiety. Um but the reality is that uh we didn't have the funding cliffs. And thankfully, some of that's due to the fact that uh we did have federal grants that came in. However, in F Y twenty-one. Um and now F Y twenty-two at the state level, tax revenue has exceeded. What um their estimates were. Uh I believe that the tax revenue uh is, has grown at the state level. Somewhere in the neighborhood of five point one percent. Um and so they're, they are in a very good position. The the governor's budget not only is increasing chapter seventy. But it's also increasing their stabilization fund at the state level um to an all-time high. Chapter seventy is being increased at an all-time high, stabilization is being increased at an all-time high. And then um one other piece that I learned um in a presentation on Friday from the tax Massachusetts Taxpayers Association. Is that um the governor is putting forth his budget. Uh and in a parallel version, um also putting out the second round of. Um federal funding in terms of that ARPA money that goes to municipalities. They still have forty-three percent of that money available, and so that's in the billions of dollars. That will come out to continue to support municipalities as they go forward in F Y twenty-three and F Y twenty-four. So similar to S R three, municipalities are gonna have a considerable amount of money in addition to a budget that's pretty strong. Um that's being put forth by uh the governor right now. Historically, and I I think uh Mr. Francica probably would support this. The um chapter seventy that's proposed by the governor generally is not reduced incredibly. As it goes then through the House and then through the Senate um and gets into those budget discussions.
If you look at history, um the House usually, when they get to their their part of it, they usually. To Gordon's point, don't really touch chapter seventy. Historically, if there's any increases that comes out of the Senate and then it goes to the Ways and Means, which is the combination of both House and Senate, and they flesh it out. Historically, they haven't always given the final budget to the governor that includes the Senate's increase. But they don't go back to the governor's numbers, they meet in the middle somewhere. So I think this is a very healthy and optimistic version of chapter seventy right now. And I'll be cautiously optimistic that says when the state really gets into their discussions, it might go up a little bit. And history supports that.
So we're, we're sitting in a a very strong fiscal position. Uh and the hope is that uh the conversations that we started back in January with the town council will continue. In a collaborative way where we can grow. Last two years, our overall budget has been in the one point five or lower increase. Um as a final increase, which unfortunately, when you're, you're dealing with a budget of our size. And you're dealing with eighty percent of it being salary. Uh it generally means when you have contractual obligations that you're going to be reducing. It generally means when you have contractual obligations, that you're going to be reducing. And we did, over the last two years, we reduced and we were down a number of positions in FTEs. And we've highlighted those in any number of discussions, so I'm not going to go through that piece again. But what I would like to highlight is, as we move forward in these discussions. We know that bringing forward contractual obligations with the current staff we have. And that would include, and this is something that I want to make sure that we highlight in a number of ways. Two adjustment counselors that we hired at the elementary level. Who are servicing at Maple Shade and Mountain View at the three through five grade levels. If we move them within that contractual obligation, you're looking at about a two point five one percent increase. Over our current budget. What we'd like to do is not only do that, but also then. Look at growing back and regaining FTEs, some might be named differently now. But that can really help us move as a district forward based on the needs we're seeing. One, the high school assistant principal, this would really help the high school. Move forward on its testing program, which it's finally settled in on looking at the PSAT. But probably more importantly, as we're thinking about social and emotional learning. And how that's integral to the academic piece, move to a house structure. And really work with their guidance counselors where they have one assistant principal, working with two guidance counselors. And concentrating on ninth and tenth grade. And probably that would be the, the assistant principal who oversees the PSAT program. And then another guidance, excuse me, assistant principal overseeing and working with eleventh and twelfth. And so you're transitioning, you're focusing on transition to high school and academic planning. And really career and college planning. And then you're focusing on exiting high school and making those plans happen. And it's something that can really personalize it much more so than the current structure we have. And allow that group to start to work with teachers and hopefully make it even more personalized for our students. So that's something, if we can bring back that assistant principal, we can start to make happen. And it, it's very effective, it's something actually I've done as a principal of a high school. When you have an opportunity like this, where you can move to, to assistant principals, and we know that there's a need. Birchland Park is looking at bringing a unit A position back, they did lose two unit A positions. This isn't, the title is not. Specific to the unit A positions that they lost, but this would be a student intervention coordinator. And what basically they're looking to do is they're looking to have a licensed teacher. Who can start to work with not only the administrators and the counselors, but very closely with, in addition to our social and emotional teacher. Students who might be our most at risk students, both for social and emotional reasons, but certainly academic reasons. Oversee some of the things that we already have going, we already are using Panorama, we're already using iReady. But work with this group to really make sure that the interventions are specific to the needs of the students. One of the things that was pretty significant in the discussions that we had with the buildings as we were going through the budget process. Was just taking a snapshot of Birchland's history. If we just talk about. Situations of student need and maybe disruption to the learning process. At January, if you go back to twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, they had ninety four such incidents. Moving forward, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, they had a hundred and fifteen. Twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, they had a hundred and nineteen. Fast forward to this year, they have two hundred and twenty nine. So we know that students are, or have more needs, and we need to figure out how we can better support them. And this was a, a position that can certainly help them start to coordinate and do a better job with how we utilize coaching. How do we utilize interventions? And how we communicate with families, specifically with families who may have students who are the dearest. You've heard this next request the last few years, but it probably makes even more sense this year. This is now taking a position we have, but we share between the two, three through five elementary schools, the elementary math coach and interventionist. We put on interventionist there because our, our coaches are helping with intervention. And right now, we have one coach who's stretched very thinly between two schools. And, and we think we can do a better job, specifically in math in this case, we know that we've lost a literacy coach. That's something that we hope over the next few years we can build back. But in this case, these are the key positions we hope to recover for next year. And math is where we have a significant need. And so this would allow both buildings to plan and utilize. The services of an experienced coach who can also get into the interventions. And help our staff do a better job and become more specific to the needs of our students. You know that we have an evaluation going on of our preschool, that evaluation actually is starting to wrap up. So, it is probably going to be an expansion of the preschool program. And what we would like to do is plan that over two years. Right now, we don't have a specific position that we would put into the budget, but. Most likely. If the preliminary discussions we've had, when they present the full report. You're probably going to need that third preschool classroom, so I would say that this most likely is going to be a teaching position. And so currently, we have it budgeted as such. Should that report change, we would obviously bring that forward. And, but what the, what we're looking at, the group went out, not only looked at all of our processes, but they also then looked at. Four preschool models around us and are looking at to develop, what were the best practices of each of those preschools? And so they looked at Windsor, Connecticut, they looked at Ludlow, they looked at Longmeadow, they looked at Hampton Wilbraham, and they looked at. That's the fourth, actually, sorry, I was going to the fifth. And they are looking now to put together what would be the best recommendations to make our program. Much more efficient. And one of the things that we are doing right now is our preschool program is also. Very intertwined with our ASD program. And yet our ASD program services K to two as well. And so we're overwhelming almost two programs due to some very unique circumstances. I'll leave it at that, because I don't want to get into anything that might identify individual students.
Physically find the space for another preschool.
We can, yeah, we can, and that's something that. Our administrators at Meadowbrook are working on, and we'll also look at other options as we discuss, you know, are there other things that we can do in a district? But right now, we can do that, we would take most likely. A room that's in the preschool area that's used for more related services, and we would have to find a spot for the related services. But there's some other things that we might be able to do that would take certain things off of Meadowbrook, and so we're looking at possibly doing that too. And then finally, this is something that has been discussed in previous meetings, but. If we're looking to stop sharing teachers and provide the. The specials and the schedule that will allow home, class, homeroom teachers, excuse me. To have the ability to have collaborative planning when their, their children are at specials. And also what they call a wind block, whatever you need block, so that from collaborative planning. I have a window of time with my homeroom class where I might be able to reteach. I might be able to start to do things that can really target some of the needs that I'm identifying. But I'm not finding the time to get back at it. Because there's always that pressure of having to move forward.
That's a good idea.
What we achieved this year, and it was somewhat contrived, but I have to give our elementary principals incredible credit. Given everything that they're trying to tackle, we did achieve collaborative planning. Not to the level that we'd like to see it, but we have collaborative planning. We don't have the wind block across the board, we'd like to have that happen. And as we're doing this, we want to have a much better understanding of how we're utilizing all this time. And so if you can give a schedule where you see it uniformly across, and it's making sense to someone in August. You have a much better chance of using that time effectively for students than if it seems like it's sporadic. And, you know, very contrived. So, each year we want to improve. These are the positions that we're hoping to recover from or within this budget. And basically with these additions, it takes us to about a three point nine percent overall increase. We know that that's higher than we've seen in many years, we average generally somewhere in the two percent or below in terms of our increase. In many cases, and if you're below two, that means you're reducing, as we said at the beginning of this discussion. You know, I will go back to the statement that I made at the beginning of, of this presentation, and that we've heard from. Others on the town side, that this is a, a good year to possibly show and achieve some growth. The, the next pages, next couple pages, really just give you an idea of how chapter seventy is calculated. And that there are different categories in chapter seventy, and they get weighted differently. So you, you know, you look at a preschool child. And the administration and instructional leadership, and as you go across, there are different weights for really. Monetary value that are attributed to those different categories. And then when you flip the page and you see the chart for the estimated chapter seventy for FY twenty three for East Long Meadow. It tells you, it shows you how it breaks out in terms of how they actually develop that foundation budget. So, we figured that that's, that's an important thing to have, just to see how the different categories work. And one of the things that we're seeing, and one of the reasons why our chapter seventy has gone up significantly. Is that our low income students are now at a percentage of twenty nine percent. And so that's significantly higher than it's been in the past. That is an area that has been heightened in terms of monetary value in the foundation budget. And so that's contributing to our chapter seventy going up.
And I do remember, not to interrupt one minute, I do remember Laura Paul coming in, and when she spoke to us. She has made us aware of the fact that, excuse me, the low income numbers are rising. Because there's benefits to the lunch program, as well as our athletic fees.
Right.
So what all, it impacts in more ways than just in this way.
And, and to that point, you know, we know that poverty. Creates incredible need and incredible often deficits. And so those are things that we were now dealing with in our classrooms, and those are things that we have to be sure that we have supports in place. For students as, as they come into our buildings. And so, you know, to the point of professional development, some of the things that we're doing. Those are the types of things we're doing in professional development, we're not necessarily implementing any new curriculum. But we are driving our teachers and staff skills and better understanding. Of students that they may now have and do have in their classrooms, so that they can structure learning environments that are supportive. Going to the final sheet in your packet or final few sheets, which is the, a sheet that you've seen for many years. And that's the town's spreadsheet for budget request. It just breaks out all of what I've just said in a different way. And gives you an idea of where the salary increases. But also shows in the notes, and we can certainly add more to that. But on the far right of that spreadsheet is where we usually give explanation for the town in terms of anything that might be new. And so we certainly wanted to make sure that they know we're moving to adjustment counselors in that top line. Of teachers and unit A staff, teachers and nurses from the Esser Grant to the operational budget. With that said, the overall increase there is about a two point four percent increase.
Gordon, what column are those two in right now in that line?
What column?
Of FTEs.
They are, for this purpose, they're actually in the operational budget, I believe.
Which they're not.
No, so we've moved them up, we did, is that, you're saying, take them out of the two hundred and forty eight, put them over in the, add them to the three point six eight?
Yeah, I mean, that's. Actually, what's happening?
Yeah, this is, this is a projection for next year, but yeah, we can do that.
No, isn't this, this year plus, the bottom is the new stuff, the four oh one.
Correct, yep.
They're five, I mean.
So if we put them in the incorrect column, we could correct that too.
Because they really are in the three point six eight, right?
You would add two, yeah, so it'd be five.
Then they gotta come down to the five and be seven.
Correct.
Then they get four oh six, so the four oh one should be three nine nine.
Yep, so we'll make that change. Okay, got it.
Which I know, you know, I know, and I, I know.
But I think having it in the notes called out specifically and talking about where they were funded this year supports with that, I think.
Well, but this two five one isn't right either. On top of this, this page. I mean, it says it in a way, but it's not really that.
Where, which one are you on? No, this is more for.
You shouldn't wear, I don't think you should wear.
Okay.
I know, I, I know, I get it.
Yeah.
This is why it's in the discussion for all of you, so we know what you would like to present to the town.
I know, but I, we can, you can do it how you want, I'm just, that's mine.
Oh no, we're, we're going to do it the way the committee wants us to do it, that's why, that's why we're presenting.
What you're submitting, what you're submitting is this.
Eventually, we're, well, we can submit more, because I think the idea is that we're, yes, we're required to submit this sheet eventually. And we want to make sure that we're including all the information that you feel should be included, so that we can continue the discussion.
When do you have to get something over to them?
Well, they, they feel that, or we have opened up the line of communication that we were going to give the preliminary numbers after this meeting.
Okay. Okay. So we're going to go to almost three point eight percent?
That's up to this group. Yeah, we're presenting, we're presenting to you the recommendation from the leadership team. And we feel that we're in a position to recover positions, these aren't positions that are really new, these are FTEs.
I'd be careful with that, Gordon, because really they are, because one of them's not. I'd like putting that list out before, and then this list, the list of, what is it, ten, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, ten. Only one of them's the same as the five, so I would, you know, I wouldn't say there was one of them.
Assistant principal, the math.
Isn't that the only one?
Well, we've lost the coach. It was, but we're still, we're looking to recover, because the needs right now are more significant in math. I mean, yes, you're right.
Recovering the same position. Our wording is specific, I think that's all I'm saying, so, yes, if we're down ten positions, we're looking to. To justify that, because if we're complaining about losing ten positions, but we're now looking to replace all but one of them.
I think it's simple, because the needs have changed, because of the pandemic.
Yeah.
I mean. That's fair, but then we shouldn't really highlight the ten that we've lost, because.
Which is why in the presentation I did.
Yeah, right, cool.
But also, we may have had, like, if we had the extra positions to work with, I know in the past, we maybe have said, well. We're, we're moving away from this and we're doing this, we've kind of sort of moved positions around. With, you know, if somebody's retiring or they're left, and do, do we need this, we reassessed it, it's just this time around, we're. It's just this time around, we're working with that many less people. So that's why I, I think it's okay to do it that way. But I, I know what you mean by that.
Yeah, it makes sense.
It does, and, and with the pandemic, I just think, yeah.
I think one of the most important parts to all of this is that no matter what document we give them, that we're in the discussion live.
Yeah.
They, they, the documents themselves don't do do the reality service. Just, just service.
And I think the preschool, adding to the preschool program, I think in the years to come, we're gonna see a bigger and bigger and bigger push.
Oh, yeah.
For, I mean, I don't necessarily feel that should be us taking the entire burden on, like we went from half day to full day kindergarten, that was a necessity, but I think they very desperately would love to have us take care of children from birth on. But, so you know that that pre-K program is, it's, it's coming. They want the kids in there and, and so but we need to baby steps toward that and I'm happy to see that you're adjusting.
And that's something that we're pretty good at. Planning over time and making sure that we're not overly challenging any one operational budget. And kindergarten's a great example of that, and that was prior to me. I just came in and, and with um, his old jars helped manage that.
Right.
But there was no fiscal challenge to the town. When we moved from half day uh, kindergarten and tuitioned full day to just full day.
Right, right.
And that was due to the management of all of you who are here during those times and um, the, you know, superintendent and business managers before me.
But it was, it was, and, and you know.
But it was managed well. There was a vision of how to do it.
It, it was, it was put out there that, because my daughter was in that first class and it was put out there that the tuition, there will be no tax increase. The tuition goes strictly to the bond.
Right.
And then when it goes, and we were all part of this discussion.
We were.
When the bond was paid off, the tuition goes away.
Right.
That's good.
And that's the way, and they held, we were able to hold to that for a long time.
Um, the other thing I would just slightly caution towards is directly correlating chapter seventy increases to increases in our budget. Times years we have very little increase in chapter seventy, so to claim all of it this year, that it should all, we should get it all this year, means in future years when it's low that we shouldn't. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, no, it's a, it's a great point.
You know.
I think in order
I don't think it holds water a lot of times when you say there's increases or decreases in chapter seventy. And part of that chapter seventy does stay on the town side to pay for benefits of employees in the town too, so we can't really take all of it. That's all I'm saying, just as in the presentation.
Yep.
Just throw that on.
Yeah.
So I, in, in this budget, really what we're asking the town to do, and I thank you for pointing that out, is to meet us just a little bit above what their average would be over those seven years and, and stay at that two percent. Give us the chapter seventy and increase their input by two percent.
But that's the argument we're making though, we're directly correlating chapter seventy to our operating budget. So if we say that, well, you only have to contribute two percent more than chapter seventy. In years that we get very little, then, then they should be able to apply that same logic and say, well.
Right.
Percent over chapter seventy, so we're only gonna be half percent.
But they have, they've, they've applied that logic in other years.
We've applied that logic, but I don't know.
Eight hundred and seventy-five thousand, they gave us point nine percent.
Yeah.
I think when times are good, they're good, maybe so.
Okay.
It's not directly correlated because it can't be, because we also have years where we get very little, but we still get something.
And, and right now, from the state standpoint and the town standpoint, we're fiscally strong.
Well, and that's my biggest worry. Everybody's drunk with cash right now. We're all gonna hog wild and then the bottom will fall out a year or two and.
I'm, I'm staying conservative. Just looking for three.
Well, we are, we're not though, because we, we looked at seven FTEs, that's a long-term commitment to the town, to, to, for benefits alone.
Well, we're on, we're not looking at seven, we're looking at five.
And.
Are we gonna talk about this?
I think when you think about.
Because we don't pay those benefits now either.
We do pay those benefits.
The town does?
Yes, yeah. No.
No.
They're already paying those benefits.
What's dangerous too though, because if departments start adding positions not through the regular, regular budget process, and then we have long-term liability.
How else do we use the grants though, Greg? I mean, that, how else do we use the grants and?
Well, it's fine, my, you know, but my issue is that just rolling them over.
We're rolling over by announcing that we're doing it.
We're letting them know.
Being transparent.
Yeah, but we're adding seven FTEs as long as we're on the same page, we're asking for seven more far mid FTEs.
Right, and we've lost how many in the last couple of years?
Not adding, recovering, recovering.
We're just recovering, but we're not, we're recovering FTEs, but not.
Recovering FTEs.
Again, it goes back to the needs of change.
But can you call it a recovery if it's something different?
Yeah.
If my car got totaled and trashed and I go out and buy another car, it doesn't mean I recovered it.
You had one vehicle, you recovered the vehicle.
You recovered a vehicle, a vehicle.
No, I didn't recover.
You recovered a vehicle.
Cover is to get it back.
You know, Greg, I look at. Like, for instance, I look at the, the pair of professionals, okay, like we have ninety pair of professionals at, at this point. There was a point in time where we had over a hundred pair of professionals. So we, you know, you look, you change, maybe having that counselor is able to take stress off of the teacher, we're able to eliminate a pair or two, you know what I'm saying? It's evolving. And so, yeah, we lost ten different positions. We're asking for seven, some are, some, seven, some are not. But this is kind of a, they have to understand, this is just a tricky situation we've been in. It's, it's been unprecedented. And I know that we, we. We can.
Can we read that?
It can happen, and I think to your point, like you're talking about a long-term commitment on the behalf of the town, but it's a long-term commitment on behalf of our children.
Yeah.
Right.
We have kids that, we just heard the numbers. Like, we have kids who need help, and clearly what we have right now is not helping them to the extent that they need it. In addition to that, we have an ever diversified population. We have almost a third, nearly a third of our student population is now
Yep.
meeting the definition of low income.
Correct.
That's gonna come with a host of responsibilities that we need to take on as a district. So if we don't start now to address this through the recovery, the reissuance, the whatever we want to call it of positions, then we're gonna be climbing an even steeper hill next year and a year after. And the cost to the town then won't even touch this because it's gonna be doubled, tripled in terms of impact that we're gonna need to make on kids.
We've identified those numbers that you gave us a little while ago needing services. How many more kids are out there that have not been identified? Because we don't have the ability or capability to identify them at this point.
I mean, but they're still wearing masks. I, I'm sitting around, I'm just sitting there thinking of the kids. Speech issues alone, I feel, moving forward. Um, not being able to articulate properly, not be able to just understand facial recite cues and I just, so it's like, I hope they understand that. Not that we're even looking for those types of positions right now, but I hope they see it. My other thought is, are we giving them what they want? Are we giving them enough information without overburdening them? Necessary, but is this, because I know sometimes they want a little more, but
We want them to be happy.
Cover sheet to explain the spreadsheet.
Yeah.
All right, you know, I just want to make sure that they feel comfortable what we've given them without burdening them with too much information.
Correct me if I'm wrong, we don't even know when we're meeting, right? We, there's no dates out there.
No, but um, this would be a start to asking for when the next meeting is. And I know that um, Mrs. Trullio's been in contact with Mr. Kane, so hopefully that will generate another meeting.
Well, that's a start.
It's a lot of work.
We need some sort of emotional.
Yes.
I do think this should also be pending, like we haven't seen data yet. And I, I get we want this and I understand that we're looking at those positions. We haven't seen any data, which I a hundred percent understand, they're in the, in the midst of taking assessments right now. But I do think if we submit this, we also should say, like, somehow, like pending our first round of data.
Well, I would not submit it then. I think if you're gonna ask for different positions than we're asking for today, I wouldn't ask for later. You don't wanna change course.
But if we've got to submit something soon, we have to.
I don't know that the data is gonna shift your needs. I think the math is still gonna be significantly, we may see growth. Um, but I, I mean, in terms of say, social emotional data, um, we're gonna see some upticks, but we're also gonna see a disengagement. So I mean, I think.
All right, I just like, that is concerning to me because we have not seen any in-person assessment data and that can chart growth or chart what our reality actually is, because when we took it at the onset of the academic year, it was their first time taking an in-person assessment this academic year, and then we haven't had two assessments occur while they were in person. This is the first time
That's a good point.
that we'll have that.
They're working on it this week, right?
But I mean.
But if we have to tweak one of the positions, then I think we can.
Or, or me, and.
I mean, I think you're, your, your math is still, nothing is showing me right now that math is not still our most dire area for elementary. I just, I mean, and you're gonna wanna make your um, interventions much more specific, so we're gaining that with these positions.
All right, then that works.
But yeah, I think the data is gonna be interesting. You will see positives.
But at the same time, like we also have to, that is also what we need to anchor ourselves to. Because this is our first real measure of what our students and our teachers are actually facing. Because this is the first sustained period of time that they've been in the classroom in almost two years.
Right. And we're not, we're not unique. I mean, I think that districts around us are experiencing these same things.
I just remember I said, I was just flabbergasted when a group of second graders had all they could do to hold a scissors.
Yeah.
Like a scissors, who would think of that? But guess what? They missed it in kindergarten, they missed it in first grade.
Right.
You know what I mean? I mean, something as stupid as cutting.
Just developing routine, this has taken longer than. Yeah, self-regulation is a big one. And that's just for superintendents.
And, and there are districts out there that are taking all of the Esser money and dumping it into personnel, and that's even more dangerous because
Right.
you talk about cliffs.
Yeah.
Those are gonna come quicker.
I, I mean, I think working with all of you over the last few years and working with Mrs. Blair and our leadership team. We've always tried to stay conservative, but allow for growth. And we're not, you know, and I know it seems high, three point nine percent, but in pre-pandemic across the Commonwealth, three point nine percent is pretty average.
It is.
Not in East Long Meadow.
It is.
But across for, for a school district.
School districts are across the state, yeah.
Two, two position two and a half. School budgets, at least half the, the town budget.
School budgets, if you look, you look at, they're, they're getting four, five percent.
They are.
They override them, they must.
No, they're not overriding, they're just getting local contributions.
If, if the town budget is half school, half town, and four percent goes to the school. Only one percent goes to the town.
Right, but stabilization and stabilization.
Not every year, I'm just saying.
Not every year, but on an average, because I've looked at the same data and it's, it's school, yeah.
Yeah.
Local contribution.
We're.
Why are we so worried about our tax rate all the time?
We were, that was drilled into our heads back when the appropriations committee was still, yeah.
Right.
And that mentality hasn't really changed.
It's not a bad thing, because it makes you think about what you're spending, how you're spending it, not being foolish.
There's, there's, there's a race to twenty-five dollars. It's either Newton or the town right next door. And the, the state has already said, we are not giving you the ability to go above that prop two and a half. The only avenue is still through overrides.
Right.
It's dangerous, or you start cutting services. I understand the fiscal conservative ishism here, but there is a time when everybody's point, the town looks pretty good, so let's not go nilly willy here, but let's try and, try and grow a little bit. All right, so.
We need to make those adjustments to Greg's point, around the seven.
But I think we need a motion to submit this.
Yes, but I'm just saying like.
Would include making sure that the FTEs are properly allocated. Yeah.
And I'm asking, like, I'm not feeling partial either way. Do we feel like there is a need to submit a narrative alongside of this right now? Cause any.
A cover sheet, not a narrative.
I, I, I can't speak for the committee, but we've always provided some type of overview as to what the spreadsheet was presenting.
This isn't the whole budget, it's just the beginning part of it, so.
Well, I mean, this is, this is the budget.
Right.
But it starts the discussion, you're, you're not voting it as a final budget, but you're giving preliminary information so that they can start to have their discussions because we're, at the moment, I think we're the only town department that has not provided the town finance director and accountant um, a budget so that uh, they can have an idea where the overall budget would be for the town manager's budget.
All right, so I'll give us, I'll take a stab at this. I move to, to authorize superintendent to submit the FY twenty-three school department preliminary budget request with the edits that were presented this evening.
Sounds good, I'll second that.
That good?
I, I just think I, I still am unclear as to what the cover sheet is gonna include. Cause we have a lot of information here. We have five pages of information that I don't think needs to all be submitted, so.
The cover sheet was just gonna be overview of what this is asking. Along with the um, chapter seventy increase, that's a strong fiscal uh, situation at the state level.
Okay. All right, so motion made by Bill, second by Beth.
Yep.
Any further discussion? If I was in favor, please say aye. Oppose nay.
And I think the key is the conversation.
Yes.
That we can keep the conversation going, because we've had good discussions so far and we wanna keep it upbeat, positive and I'm going. Thank you.
We actually have.
Notice one more sheet.
Yes. So the second part of it is how you would like us to reflect um, your stipends. Um, if you would like us to ask for an increase or um, submitted as it currently is um, in terms of the total, which is broken out on that second page. With the chair, vice chair, and then the members. I believe last year there was a bit of an increase or was it the prior?
Year prior, we didn't get any last year. They referred it to a committee last year that never happened.
Okay.
Yeah. You know, I, sometimes I feel like you feel like you're being um, I don't know, greedy by asking for stipends, but there is a bit of work that's involved.
There's a good deal of work.
You know, and I, and I feel that um, years ago, there was, if you wanted it, you could have done the insurance through it, that type of thing. They took that away. And I, I feel that, you know, we're, I think half, but half the work and I just feel that asking for a little bit more, you know, for, for those that are in this position in the future, I, I don't think is a wrong thing to do at all. It barely pays for the gas. At least it used to barely pay for the gas. What did we do last year?
We submitted and it was rejected.
Yeah, no, but what did we submit?
Twenty-five percent.
Twenty-five percent.
So. We did twenty-five percent again, it would be five, an increase of five hundred and twenty-five dollars for the chair, bring that, that person to twenty-six, twenty-five, and each member would get four hundred dollars and bring that to two thousand. I don't think that's outlandish.
It's not, and it's, and it's, I think, less than, less than half of what the town council gets.
Yeah. I might away, I.
Yeah.
There's a lot of, of work that gets involved, but the twenty-five percent is still not gonna, I don't know, entice individuals to want to do this work for anything other than want us to write by their community. Of course, I mean, that's just my thought, but.
I've never been in it for the money, quite honestly. I've never been in it for the money, quite honestly, no. It is what it is.
Do we wanna throw in twenty-five percent just for the heck of it?
I think so.
We request a twenty-five, twenty-five percent increase for the elected salaries for the school committee members. Starting for this school year twenty-three.
Second, second by Aunt Snella, any further discussion? If I was in favor, please say aye.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, now, last is the new business of.
Uh, so you have. An outline of the dates, only one of which this year, which is very nice, is offset by a holiday where we have to meet on a Tuesday. I know that. Reduces the conflicts for Mr. Mackey, and we'd like to do that. We would have to set a reorg date in July, I believe July first is a Friday this year. I think we've met in the morning to reorg last few years, if anybody's, I know that that's ordering a. A holiday weekend, although a lot of us are, are marching, if not all of us on that Monday anyway.
Yeah, I know, I may, I'm praying, I'm not. I am praying, I am.
That was a good time.
I'm hoping I am, yeah. Probably gonna try to be back on. Date, when's July fourth, is that the Monday? Probably wouldn't be back until the fifth. You know, so if that's okay, so well, the first is a Friday anyways, I'm hoping I'm away, far away. So can we do this then? For that week after. I'm okay if you guys wanna meet without me, if that's okay, you just put me where you want me. And I get what I get, and I'm happy to help anyway.
I don't know that I'll be here on the fifth, but I think once we start getting in to deeper into July.
For everybody, I'm okay with that.
So July first in the morning?
And if I'm here, I'll be sad. Yeah, yeah, I'll zoom in.
And then, after that, we generally have a sort of an organizational, let's get ready for the school year meeting on the twenty-second. If we need to, we can always add a meeting in there, and then we're off and running with our two meetings a month. Oh, I'm sorry. What time would you like to meet, in the morning of July first?
Meeting dates. As listed below, including a reorg date of July one.
Motion made by Greg.
I'll second it.
Second by Aunt Snella, any further discussion? If I was in favor, please say aye. Filming this evening and Nick, who hopefully does well on his exam tomorrow.